I'd like to call the Tuesday, January 26, 2021 Planning Board Meeting to Order. Please leave roll call, please.
Thank you.
Claudia Bogan.
Here.
Jim Callahan.
Here.
Bob Dougherty.
Here.
Dave Edmonds.
Yeah.
Carolyn Turner.
Yeah.
Mike Ventresca.
Yep.
And Chair Kevin Donovan.
Yeah. Okay, now we can move on to the election of the new chair.
Thank you. Would you like me to handle this part of the meeting, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, if you could, yeah.
Thank you. So annually, the Board elects from its membership both a Chair and a Vice Chair. And so it would be appropriate now to open up for discussion, the election of Chair. Are there any nominations for the position of Chair?
I nominate Kevin Donovan.
I was gonna nominate Claudia.
Um, so is...
There's still one more year, Kevin.
So Mr. Donovan has been nominated as Chair. Is that motion seconded?
Second, we second it.
Bob, second. Are there any other nominations for Chair?
Like to make a motion to close the nominations.
Second. I'm sorry, motion was closed and who seconded?
Yes.
Thank you, David. Karen, could you call the roll? Ah, I'm sorry, before you do that, nominations are closed. So the vote would be for Kevin Donovan to serve as Chair of the Planning Board for calendar year 2021. Karen, would you call the roll?
Claudia Bogan.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Dougherty.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Enthusiastically, aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventresca.
Aye.
And Kevin Donovan.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we did the Vice Chair.
And now the position of Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair of the Planning Board for 2021?
I nominate Claudia.
And I will second it.
Motion made and seconded to nominate Claudia as Vice Chair. Are there any...
Can I close the elections?
No other nominations, motion to close?
Second.
Second. Karen, call the roll, please.
Claudia Bogan.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Dougherty.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventresca.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Okay. First up, under public hearings, continued Robertson Way definitive subdivision request to modify a condition of the planning board's January 13, 2009 approval of the subdivision, Condition Number 14, to eliminate the requirements for installation of a security gate at the location of the emergency vehicle in Conservation Commission access easement at the end of the cul-de-sac, Brian Melanson.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board and audience. Mr. Melanson had asked for a modification of the Planning Board's approval of this subdivision back in 2009 to eliminate a condition that a gate be installed at the end of the cul-de-sac at the location of an easement that led to a Conservation Commission parcel. Excuse me, the public hearing started, I believe, in December. And the Board had submitted the request to both the Conservation Commission and the Fire Department for review and consideration because though with those were the two entities that, from the record, we could tell, were interested in, um, in having the gate. The feedback from the Fire Department was they had no issue with the gate being removed, but the Conservation Commission wrote us a letter requesting that the approval or the approval of the request not be granted until some approachments that had been made were rectified. When Mr. Melanson heard that, he asked you for time to consult with the Commission, and he did so. He actually met with them on the site this past weekend. Four of the Commission members were present, not all of them, there are seven members. And they did not come to a conclusion on Saturday. They, in fact, want to, the members that were present intend to go back to the full Commission later this week at their meeting to discuss what happened on-site and to see if they can come to a conclusion or a different recommendation or a more thorough recommendation than they were able to give us with the initial letter. So because the Commission has not yet finished its discussion, Mr. Melanson, at my suggestion, has filed with you and with us a request to extend the deadline for action on his request to the end of February, the 26th, which would allow us to continue the public hearing to the Board's February meeting, by which time we would hope that not only would we have heard from the Conservation Commission, but if some of the things that come back in that letter require action by Mr. Melanson, he would be hopeful that he might be able to accomplish some or all of those before he meets with you again in February. So the Planning Staff is recommending two things, that you accept the offered extension of time for Board action, extending the deadline to February 26th, and then continue the public hearing to 7:00 PM on February 23rd, 2021, which is your next scheduled meeting.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I mean, does any questions from the Board? This is a public hearing. There's a direct to see anyone out there who would wish to speak.
If there is anyone out there during, in the audience that would like to speak, you can find under the Participants button, if you click it, you will see that there is, either under the Participants button, you should see a hand, a raised hand feature, or on the updated versions, you will find that under the Reactions button at the bottom of your screen. If you hover your mouse over those buttons, you'll see the raised hand feature and will be able to tell that you would like to speak. I am scrolling through our audience now, Mr. Chairman, and I do not see anyone with raised hands.
Motion to accept the Director's recommendation.
Second.
Motion made by Bob to accept the Director's recommendation, second by Claudia. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Dougherty.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds. David. Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventresca.
Aye.
And Chair Kevin Donovan.
Aye, seven in favor, none opposed. Next up, under public hearings, proposed amendments to the zoning, to zoning ordinance to add a new definition for pet recreation and pet daycare facility. B, allow these pet facilities by right in IP, IP to IG and BI, zoning districts if they are less than or equal 5,000 square feet in the area and by special permit in the same districts if greater than 5,000 square feet in the area. And add C, add a note to the table of users, Section 5.1, regarding limitations on retail sales and sitting near residential zoning districts, auto into Tesco.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board and audience. This is a zoning amendment that was the product of a collaboration with an individual who is in our audience tonight and available to answer any questions, if you have any, who wished to open a pet recreational facility that did not meet any of the existing definitions that were in the current zoning ordinance. And she started by speaking with the Building Inspector, who eventually came to me. And over the course of time, we created a proposed ordinance that would not only accommodate this particular individual and the type of use that she would like to have, but also provided us, I guess, with an opportunity to clear up by including pet daycare facilities. We have a number of them in the city, but there is no specific definition for them today. So it served a second purpose, if you will, in that, a broader purpose in helping the city perhaps create some definition, literally, around a use that we already have in a couple of locations in the city. As was mentioned by the Chair, a specific definition of the term would be added to the zoning ordinance. The use would be permitted either by right or special permit, depending on its size, in four different districts. They were chosen specifically because those four districts today have uses that, while not the same, and perhaps not even similar, involve animals. Kennels and veterinary services, veterinarian offices are allowed, one or both, in those four districts. So we tried to have some sense of consistency, I guess, in choosing those. They're obviously all non-residential zoning districts. And although some of them are but residential zoning districts, the proposal includes a provision that would require, if they are sighted, that they be located at least 500 feet away from the closest residential zoning district boundary line. So try to provide a little bit of a buffer. It's similar to the veterinary specialized services use that's allowed in at least one of these four districts. And that one has a minimum distance of 300 feet. So we went perhaps a little beyond that, obviously, to 500. In sum, that is the proposal. The Council has started its public hearing and continued it pending receipt of a report from the Planning Board. I understand Alderman Tedesco was hoping to join us this evening, but had an issue come up at work that has apparently prevented him, as he thought it might, from attending. He asked me to let you know a couple of things. One is that although the Council obviously hasn't come close to making a decision yet, the discussion so far, he thinks that there's at least several counselors who might be supportive of this, but only if the use was allowed by special permit regardless of size. You know, I think the thinking was that there are a number of different uses in the zoning where uses by right are allowed under a certain size and only by special permit above a certain size. Retail is one of those, and its threshold is 5,000. So there was some logic, I guess, we looked there to the 5,000. But apparently, at least some counselors would only be comfortable if it went to special permit across the board. That would obviously be more onerous for a potential property owner, but by the same token, it would also, a special permit process, allow the City Council to place conditions on a particular approval or a particular entity if they felt that was necessary. So in a nutshell, that's what the proposal is and where the Council is in its deliberations. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And as I said earlier, the individual that was hoping for this zoning amendment was in our audience and would make herself known if she would like to speak. Or if not, she'll hold off and answer any questions. She's out there if you need her. Thanks.
Any questions from the Board?
Kevin. Kevin?
Was it Jim?
Yes. So my question through the Chair is, it lists the square footage, the allowable use in this proposal, but it doesn't address the number of dogs. And we've had a couple of facilities in the industrial park that became a little bit problematic because the number of dogs that were in the facility and their hours of operation, and then taking them out outside beyond the floor walls of the facility early in the morning and the dogs barking and annoying the neighbors. Is that being addressed at all in this proposal? Any conditions?
No, none of the things, I think you listed at least three things, a limitation on the number of dogs. There may be a limitation that's Board of Health related, depending on the floor size, but I'm not aware if there is one. I don't know what it would be. I don't, I don't, this proposal doesn't address a limit on the number of dogs or the hours of operation of the establishment or addresses anybody, obviously, the dogs would be outside as they were being walked into and out of the facility. But I don't have any specific wording in the proposed ordinance that deals with those. Not that this is a rationale, but there is the option. Those are all very good questions, obviously. And things like the number of dogs might matter if you're in the middle of an industrial zone, you know, with no nearby neighbors, that may be one thing. But someone who's only 500 feet away in the winter with no ground cover or trees to muffle the sound, it might be a different matter. Those kinds of issues that you raise are obviously all valid, but they might very well be arguments for special permit conditions that can be tailored specifically to facility, you know, a 10,000 square foot size facility would obviously probably have a different number of dogs permitted than one that was only 5,000 square feet or 1,500. Though I don't know how to, to set some of those parameters in advance other than to say that they could be tailored in a special permit process.
Thank you.
Mike, did you have a question?
Yes, I did, Mr. Chair. I get to Tina along the same lines as Jim's concerns. You know, you alluded to the special permit process kind of policing that. And I, I, I think that's probably more in line the way to go. It'll also kind of keep an eye on things if, you know, after a year or so, things are really loud or whatnot and the special permit can be revoked. That's kind of where I'm at. And I, and I understand probably what they're trying to do is have a small, nice little daycare and for the, for the little animals and little dogs and cats, whatever, but, um, it's, you know, the way it's written right now could get out of hand. That's all I'm saying, and I think it needs to be kind of wrangled in. That's it, thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, my name is Cindy Tulamari. I'm the one that is actually looking to open the recreational facility. And I just want to explain a little bit more because I think you guys are basing your, your thoughts and their questions based off of a daycare situation where dogs are dropped off without their owners. What I'm, what I'm envisioning is actually more of an indoor dog park where they, dogs would be with their owners. So the level anxiety, typically dogs bark when they're anxious or want to get out. So you, you know, when you get to kennels, they're loud and whatnot because they're being caged up or they're with people they don't know. In, in an indoor dog park situation, I'm basing it off of one that is already in existence on the South Shore. And I've visited it many times and act, and funny enough, there isn't a lot of barking. The other, you know, to speak to the other issue would be that I wouldn't be doing it at early hours of the morning. I'm looking for more like a 10 to 8 sort of hours to hold. So it wouldn't be too early, it wouldn't be too late. And, and, um, like I said, they would be with the owners. The only time the dogs would be outside would be coming from the, the car to the, the park. Uh, yeah, the parameters, as far as how many dogs per square footage, I mean, I don't know if there's a parameter that can be set per square foot. I, I'm not sure how to, how to gauge that. But that's, you know, something that I'm willing to, to work with you guys on.
Just, just to clarify, if I could, Mr. Chairman, probably for Cindy, but others too. I appreciate the details of what your intended facility would be, but the ordinance that's before the Planning Board and the Council, and I'll read it because I think it would be helpful to anybody else in the audience. The definition would be the following, pet recreation or pet daycare facility. Building or part thereof in which persons are employed in providing services related to the indoor recreation obedience training and or daycare of pets on an hourly or daily but not overnight basis. Such use shall not be considered a kennel, as such term is used in these zoning ordinances. So I appreciate your details, but it's kind of interesting what you've said. It might also be another argument in favor of allowing them only by special permit. A City Counselor could take into account the particular use that you're proposing and perhaps would be not as concerned about barking or outside activities as they would in other applications. So because the ordinance is written to be broader than just you, that's why the Planning Board and the Council have to take these other potential situations and places into account. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from Board, Mike?
To the Chair, to Cindy. Yeah, unfortunately, we have to look at it as a worst-case situation. Well, you sound, sounds like a really, a, a good thing, and I'd love to see that. But unfortunately, like, like Tina said, it's not what's in front of us, unfortunately. And we gotta, we have to watch out for, for every aspect that could come in under that.
That's understandable. That makes sense.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the Board? This is a public hearing. Does the Director see anyone out there who would wish to speak?
I do not, but I'll just repeat quickly that if you do, please hit either the Participants or the Reactions button at the bottom of your computer screen and hit the Raised Hand button. And Mr. Chairman, I do not see anybody out there with their hands raised.
So, Mike?
Basically, to, to the Board, through the Chair, you know, I kind of want to put a no vote to this, but unfor, you know, I don't want to, I guess, I'd like to have, have Tina craft a, maybe a, a recommendation as opposed to a no vote, if that sounds... Because the way it is right now, I, I think a special permit is the way to go. I think it addresses my concerns and, and I, I won't speak for Jim, but I think it's kind of was, he was heading in that direction as well. I'm not sure, but that's my thought.
Mechanically, if that's what you wanted to do, you could make a motion to that, to make a favorable recommendation on the proposed zoning amendment to the Council, but with the change that all such uses, regardless of size, be allowed only by special permit and not by right in the four proposed districts. You could make that the Planning Board recommendation if a majority of your colleagues agreed.
Um, I, I like that idea. Would it make sense, though, to close the public hearing at this time before we decided to make motions and things of this nature? And if so, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion may require a closed public hearing set by Mike. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Dougherty. Bob?
Aye.
Bob Dougherty. Dave Edmonds. Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Um, I, I saw Dave Lips move, but I didn't hear him.
Yeah. Dave, we're not hearing you.
So I, I saw your eye, but I didn't hear it.
You wanted to thumbs up. Very good.
Thumbs up.
It's kind of hard on a, on a Zoom call, but, on a roll call rather. But yes, we have a video recording that will show you us being in favor.
Sorry, sorry, Karen, to interrupt.
Oh, no, I, I feel the same way. I saw him say yes, but didn't hear it. Mike Ventresca?
Yes.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
All right, seven in favor, none opposed.
All right, then, with respect...
Dave's asking something.
Yeah, that's gonna be harder.
Oh.
Yeah, I see that his microphone is on and I don't have any way of...
I think he's gonna try to come back in.
Yeah, that's what I think he's motioning, yes.
Like a pictionary sort of thing, you know, like a charade sort of arrangement. Yeah, if you've done this, I might have... Why don't we wait a minute? See if he can get back in for the discussion.
Here he comes, we hope.
You said walk on the dog.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Thank you.
My family's been trying to mute me for years.
It took Zoom to do it.
All right, so now that we have David back and we have a closed public hearing, Tina, with respect to your suggestion that we can send a favorable recommendation with the modification suggestion of having all of these facilities be subject to a special permit requirement and having none of them by right, that makes a lot of sense to me, and that might deal with Mike's issue. So I'd make what you said, Tina, in the form of a motion, but I don't want to cut off discussion.
I'll, I'll second Claudia's motion for discussion. I just want to make sure it, Jim's, it, it addresses all my concerns, for sure. I just want to, I'm not, I'm not sure about let Jim talk, see if he addresses his concerns as well.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the heading towards a special permit. Really, the biggest concern is noise. And I think that goes hand in hand with the number of dogs at the facility, the hours seem another avenue that should be documented that can control the, the times when it'll be most disturbing to neighbors. And even at 500 feet, those dogs barking, if there's a couple of them, can become annoying real quick. But that was, that was my only point, to really go towards a special permit. Thank you.
Any other input from the Board? Okay, a motion was made by Claudia, second by Mike. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Dougherty.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Michael Ventresca.
Aye.
And Chair Kevin Donovan.
Aye, seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Next up, under subdivision, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, can I just, I don't know if it's the right time to bring it up, but Tina, on the Robinson Way, we made a motion to continue the public hearing, but did we make a motion, was part of that to vote to accept the developer's request for an extension of time for Board action on the modification to February 26th?
Yes, they did vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't, I'm sorry about that.
The vote was to accept the, the Director's recommendation, and that was all included, all inclusive.
Took, okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Thanks. All right, sorry.
Before we get away, no, fair enough. Okay, so did you call for the next item on the agenda?
Yes, next up subdivisions, Strawberry Lane, groundwater break, breakout issue for Willow Drive, Murray Shannon Pharma State subdivision.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, coming back around to this issue, which we talked about last a couple of months ago. You remember that staff brought two issues to the Board, actually, starting in, I guess, the summer. And the last discussion, I believe, was in October or November. The two issues were a concern that more earthwork and grading changes had occurred in the field and what was shown on the approved subdivision plan. And the second issue was a breakout of, an apparent breakout of groundwater from a retaining wall in a driveway on a property on the Abutting Street, Strawberry Lane. And at our last discussion, the Board, I think, came to the collective decision to lay on the table the issue of the grading and in favor of waiting for the project to advance closer, at least closer to completion, and then perhaps to evaluate the grading with facts at that time. So I acknowledge that issue is still out there, but I believe we've laid that on the table to be brought up perhaps again in the future. Leaving the issue of the groundwater breakout. It had been reported by neighbors to engineering for the first time, I guess, last January, a year ago. And over the course of the Board's discussion this summer and fall, we had reached out to Engineering and DPW. It was thought that the groundwater breakout was caused by redirection of groundwater that would have happened during blasting on the Abutting Farillo Drive subdivision. And all, there is a longstanding, decades-long knowledge of water in basements on houses on Strawberry Lane. The first known time that the city knew of water that was pooling in Strawberry Lane on account of this groundwater breakout was last year. Neither DPW nor Engineering, when asked, could say definitively that the blasting on the adjacent site caused the groundwater breakout. It could have, but there is no way to know for sure that that's what caused it. And one of the, either DPW or Engineering, had speculated that if... And one of the, either DPW or engineering had speculated that if there had been monitoring wells along that property line that were monitored, that we may have been able to detect and document changes in groundwater flow over time. But we didn't have monitoring wells that might have proven it definitively. So in the absence of definitive approval, it appears that we have a situation that the city would likely need to rectify. Mr. Murray has been involved in the discussions. He's attended site visits and he's even been to at least one, several meetings of the planning board where he has said that if it could be proven that it was the result of his actions, he would take responsibility for fixing it. But we don't have definitive proof absolutely showing that it resulted from the blasting. So my suggestion to you this evening is and was going, was and is going to be that our next appropriate step might be to draw this to a close from the planning board's perspective is to write a letter to the mayor and to DPW Director Jay Duran and perhaps Engineering Director Jay Corey that explains kind of the history of the board's involvement, includes some of the photographs that we've taken over time and some of the emails that we've received in the way of documentation. And share that with the mayor and those one or two gentlemen in the city and urge them to make a correction of the problem of priority. It is creating a pretty good sized pool of ice in front of the house. It creates a pool of water lots of days, many days. There were a few times, I think probably this summer where we had a drought situation where that water didn't necessarily run daily. But now it's appearing in the winter as sheets of ice that form pretty significantly in front of number eight. So I did speak with attorney Joe Tarby, who's in the Zoom call this evening and is available to either make remarks or answer questions if needed. But I spoke with him earlier today and he had had a conversation with Mr. Murray. And even though it is not identified as a problem that he created, Mr. Murray would apparently be willing and offered to be a part of the solution. Excuse me, in terms of in terms of perhaps offering the services of Commonwealth Engineering to assist with some of the investigation. And perhaps even if there is a solution participating in it in some way, either by, with construction and or a contribution of funds toward the cost of repair. Excuse me, I'm going to grab a water.
Any question from the board, Mike?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to the boards, I just, this is right around the corner from my house, this property and I and I walked, I actually took a couple of photos as well and you know, it there's a big hill behind their house and somehow the water's coming down there. Again, you know, we're not really sure if it's you know, we can't prove for certainty whether it's, it's coming from the new construction or the blasting. But there's definitely a water issue there and you can, I can understand the concerns of the, the, the house that it's, 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 it's in front of in the, it just so happens that water is really pulling up right down the driveway in front of their house. And this really, you know, you could say I just parked down the street. There's no other place for them to park. And I was there watching the, there's a home healthcare professional going into the house and it was really, she was on a sheet of ice. So it's definitely an issue and I'm glad that Mr. Murray is willing to step up and help out. That's, I think that's great news. That's that's, that's, that's fantastic.
Any other questions from the board, Jim?
As I recall, on these developments over there, I believe that there was a water issue at the bottom of the hill initially and not at the top where it is currently. That was mentioned in the earlier proposals. But nevertheless, the, the issue is there and it may have been altered in some manner. But it's in everyone's best interest, I think, to have both the developer and the city combine forces and come up with a solution or proposed solution, agree upon it and then take some action. Whoever's found to be responsible, let the chips fall where they may. But I think it needs to be dealt with quick, quickly. I don't think it's that difficult of a solution, but I think it would be in both the parties' interest to make sure they agree on the direction to investigate and then to remedy the problem.
What I would intend, depending on how the conversation goes and what the board decides, but if it does direct me to draft such a letter to the mayor and Mr. Corey and Dun, sorry, Jay Duran, I can draft that letter and I could circulate it to the board members for review before finalizing it and submitting it over to those gentlemen, if you so direct me at the end of the discussion.
Any other input from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, to Tina, this is unrelated to this specific project, but in that same neighborhood off, across the street down to the right at the end of that road behind those houses, there was some work being done on the culvert. And they just, if you're gonna have some communications with these, the affected people on Strawberry Lane, they were just curious as to what was going on there. And they said it was people from the city of Woben, DPW workers. And I, I didn't see anybody, so I can't confirm or deny that, but they were just wondering because there's a culvert, you know, across the street from this affected property down as you head in towards Lexington. There's a big culvert, I know that. And we got there, we're trying to clear it out and basically make the culvert do what it's, it's supposed to do is give it a surface water.
Yeah, typically that's surface water, not groundwater, but you know, and that's why we had reached out to DPW and engineering. Admittedly, though, it was back in the fall and asked them, you know, is there, is there some other
Okay.
thing that could have caused it. But I would certainly go back to DPW. They didn't, haven't said anything to me recently, but I could certainly, you know, check with them to see if, when was that work being done recently?
That was, that, when I was, when I took those pitches. And I could see that it was staked out.
Yeah. Yeah, if it was just being done, well, I'll certainly ask. I had hoped that they would have maybe mentioned it if it was longstanding. They would have mentioned it in their earlier correspondence. But maybe something's come up recently. I can certainly track that down with DPW and get more info.
Like I said, it may, may not been the DPW. It could have been a private contract. I'm not sure. But the people that live on Strawberry Lane, across the street from this subject property, who's backyard or butts that, they were just curious as to what was going on.
I see, I see. Well, I can certainly find that out. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other input from the board?
Um, Kevin, I have a general question to Tina. Tina, do we have any information as to what the repair work would involve?
Not yet. One of the folks from the engineering department was on the site visit with me back in the summer. And he thought that the solution might be a surface catch basin at the, near the end of the driveway and an underground pipe leading from that catch basin to the nearest drainage pipe that's in Strawberry Lane. I don't know where that pipe is or how far it might reach, but that seemed to be one of the solutions. But whether that would be the best solution or the cheapest solution, I'm not sure. That's the only one I've heard and it was speculation, not based on any engineering and, you know, analyses that was done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim?
Yeah. Tina, is there any information in regards to the neighbors? Who's getting water in their basement now?
I don't know off the top of my head. I can tell you that I've heard that many of the people on Strawberry Lane have water in their basements. I do know that there was one woman that emailed us sort of early in this discussion. She lived on Strawberry Lane and in her email, interestingly enough, at about the same time that the water was noticed to be coming from the end of the wall, she wrote to us that she had suffered for years with water in her basement and she no longer had water. Her sub pump wasn't even running. So we heard actually from somebody who said that the water they used to have is no longer there. But I can't answer your question directly as to how many people on Strawberry have flooding in their basements. It's longstanding from, I think, a piece of property that one, I think, may have even been Jay Corey at one point said to me, if we had to do it all over again, you probably wouldn't build those houses on Strawberry Lane because they are down a little bit and they're in a known area of high water table, I guess.
And knowing that, and my concern is that the person that you referenced from the engineering department, the initial resolve to that i- in my opinion, right now, is that it's a Band-Aid approach. If the low point of the street had water, now it's redirected. And it's the upper portion of the street in elevation is taken in, they're taken in at their basement and they're taking it at surface level, that you're going to put a surface catch basin. All you're doing is just taking the excess and you're not lowering the water table down to where it was before. And the engineering groups should be very, very well aware of that.
I think they are.
The, the, my, my point is that between Commonwealth Engineering, a very well established company and the city of Woben engineers, they should be able to come up with a drainage solution that can correct this problem the right way. And then whoever's responsible will have to deal with that as a separate issue. But to take the Band-Aid approach is just going to keep coming back at us.
Well, I, I, I think, I'm not an engineer, so your point is, is taken, but to suggest that we need to come up with a solution to make all the basements in Strawberry Lane dry for the very first time in decades. I don't, I can't, I don't know what that solution would be and I can't imagine what it would cost. I guess, well, certainly in the letter, Ken, if you want me to, put some wording in there about the bigger problem of the groundwater coming up through these basements. But the issue that was brought to us last January was not about basement flooding or wasn't about water coming from a basement. It was coming out of a retaining wall where it never came before. But the letter could, could certainly include a request that the city consider approach that would solve more than just this one issue at number eight. Look for a solution that might actually improve the basement flooding situation for more people on Strawberry. Something like that is what you're thinking. You definitely put that in the draft letter.
Thank you.
The other input from the board? Okay, what's the will of the board and the director's recommendation?
Do you want me to restate my recommendation?
Sure.
Good. I would recommend that you instruct me as the planning director to draft a letter to the mayor, DPW director and engineering director that lays out the history and our knowledge of this issue at number eight Strawberry, right through and including what I gave you for information this evening relative to the city's next steps and Mr. Murray's potential involvement. And the letter would also include some language urging the city to not only seek a solution for the issue at number eight, but also an issue that would be broader, a solution rather, that could be broader and help more residents along Strawberry Lane with their ongoing basement flooding issues. That would be my recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Claudia, was that you, Dave, was second?
It was Bob.
Oh, Bob. Motion second by Bob. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Hi.
Bob Dougherty.
Hi.
Dave Edmonds.
Hi.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Michael Ventreska.
Hi.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
All right, seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Next up, under subdivisions, 316 New Boston Street subdivision tentative. Request to accept proposed, proposed operation and maintenance plan drainage and accident easement and covenant and endorse definitive milars, DM5, incorporate.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we're actually, staff is going to recommend that you take no action on this item this evening. As it turns out, there are, we've reviewed the milars and they have been consistent with your approval, but there were a couple of sheets that were inadvertently omitted that had come from a different firm. Those have been delivered, but they need to be checked. We still have a couple of required documents for which we either don't have comments from engineering or final signed versions. So for all these reasons, we're going to recommend that you take no action this evening and that you lay the matter on the table. I guess I want to raise one question at this point and maybe we talk about it now or at the end of the meeting, but I wanted to ask the board for sort of a survey of your willingness to attend a special meeting or another meeting of a planning board. If this project is able to get all the documents in and we find that everything is in order. We have a couple of others that are in process as well for other subdivisions. I wondered if the board would be willing to schedule an interim meeting for perhaps two weeks from tonight where we would take up just the matters of accepting these easements and O and M plans and you know, endorsement votes to endorse, endorse the milars. If we could do that at an interim meeting between now and the one we have scheduled for February 23rd. But for this particular matter, I'm going to recommend that you lay it on the table and that we take it up when staff feels we have all the material we need for you to take the vote you have to take.
Don't move.
Do we need a formal motion to take no action or to just literally take no action?
I think you can just literally take no action. There's no timelines associated with it, so. Thank you for covering anyway, Bob.
No, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, next up, Legacy Lane subdivision.
Do we need a vote for, for approving a second meeting, an extra meeting?
You, well, you would have to, yeah, we'll have to have a conversation about that before we end this meeting. If, if you just give me your willingness to be available, we don't necessarily need to schedule it. I want to make sure that we actually have business to conduct. So it would be the kind of thing I would ask you if a majority of you would be available two weeks from tonight, if you would just reserve that date and not fill it. And then if we find that we have applicants that have completed all the material, then we would schedule a meeting for that night.
Who do you want to take up that now, the willingness?
Sure, I guess we could.
So I have a question. So generally speaking, with Zoom meetings and it being a pandemic, I'm free. But the question I have is, to what end are we, would we be simply trying to accommodate applicants who really have no reason to wait the two extra weeks for our next meeting and want to move forward with their project? So in essence, this is a public service where we're saying to our applicants, if you manage to get everything done much quicker, then we're not going to make you wait around for two extra weeks for our next meeting. Is that the point of it?
That would be the point of it. And I guess I would also just add one thing is that I would make it clear to the applicants. If you can wait till the 23rd, it would be our clear preference rather than to schedule an additional meeting. But if for any reason that you would have a hardship or a difficulty waiting the additional weeks, I would tell them, depending on the answer, whether the board was willing or not to hold a meeting two weeks out.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, I'm open to. I'm open to that. But I just wanted there to be to be a point to it. If you said to me, oh, well, our next agenda for the end of February is looking really long. So if there's any, you know, way we could get a couple of things off that agenda, boy, that would be a good idea. You know, that's, that's potentially another reason. But if it's for the applicants, you know, alleviation of hardship, you know, I'm still okay with that. I just wanted to, you know, put that on the table.
Director, what if you reach out to the applicant first and then email us as further data if they're not? Would that be better for everyone else?
I will let you know, again, it will depend on whether they get all the materials in, but I'll keep you posted. It's good to know that I broached the subject and that it might be a possibility. Thank you.
All right, next up, Legacy Lane subdivisions, request for release of remaining surety being held to guarantee subdivision completion, Frank.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board and audience, this too is a matter we've been hopeful would we'd be able to handle this evening. As it turns out, there is still a number of small items that, not insignificant, but four items that need to be resolved before the board, before the staff anyway, would ever consider recommending a release of. The developer is aware of that. He knows what he needs to complete the subdivision and he has been making good faith efforts. But he too is not quite there for this evening. So we have obtained from him a request for an extension of the timeframe the board has when an applicant asks for a final release of a bond. Unlike any previous request for reductions, a final release actually has a timeline of 45 days within which the board has to take action. It was extended once from December until now to allow this discussion. And he has filed another updated extension request through February to February 26, 2021, which would allow us to put this matter on the February 23rd agenda for discussion, we hope. And that is staff's recommendation that we just lay it on, you can't lay this one on the table, that you actually proactively accept his offered extension of time for board action.
Questions from the board? Claudia?
If there's no further discussion, I would make a motion incorporating the planning board director's recommendation.
Motion made by Claudia, second by Bob. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan?
Aye.
Jim Callahan?
Aye.
Bob Dougherty?
Aye.
David Edmonds?
Aye.
Carolyn Turner?
Aye.
Mike Ventresca?
Aye.
Chair Kevin Donovan?
Aye. Seven favor, none opposed. Next up, Russo Estates and Baker Way subdivision, written progress reports and updated timelines for project completion and lower board discussions, votes on formal completion date extensions, William Shray and David Baker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as you just mentioned, we received two written updates from the developers of those two subdivisions. The Baker Way had a completion date of May 22 of last year, but he has been providing us with updates along the way. The only remaining, there's only two things remaining, a street sign and acceptable final as-built. He is working on the as-built as we speak and has had an incredible amount of delays, believe it or not, with getting an appropriate street sign. So we are hopeful that that will happen over the next couple of months and that we'll see him in the spring for a final bond release on that project. Russo Estates had a completion date most recently of June of 2020 and he last updated the board in July of last year. Attorney Salvati had submitted an update letter on his behalf. He has accomplished a number of tasks since the last update, much to my satisfaction, including installation of sidewalk and curving, the binder coat on the roadway, conduit for all of the street lighting, the installation of stone bounds and the foundation for the final home on lot number six. So the latest projected completion date is May of 2021 and by then he hopes to have the remaining work done. No action is needed with respect to these updates. We will continue to monitor the ones that are expiring and bring one or two of them in at each meeting as we go through the spring. Thanks.
Next up, approval of minutes, December 8, 2020.
Has everybody had enough time to look at them? If I do not see any comments, I would make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Claudia to approve the minutes, second by Carolyn. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan?
Aye.
Jim Callahan?
Aye.
Bob Dougherty?
Aye.
Dave Edmonds?
Aye.
Carolyn Turner?
Aye.
Michael Ventresca?
Aye.
And Chair Kevin Donovan?
All right, seven favor, none opposed. Next up, we have planning board director update.
Just one or two things, I wanted to come back around on Carlson Way. When we talked to Mr. Malonson toward the end of last year, it was about both of his projects that remain outstanding. On the Carlson Way, I just wanted to remind you or update you. The issue there was we had discovered that the person over whose property the easement runs and a utility easement that was granted to the city and over which there had been a gravel driveway created, the abutting property owner had covered that with loam and sod. It isn't coming upon me, excuse me, to follow up with the city solicitor about how we could now authorize the developer to go in and make the improvements in terms of removing the fill and the sod and loam. Excuse me. I have not yet done so, but I will make it a point to do that before our February meeting and provide you with an update then. Next month's meeting may include acceptance of required documents and endorsement of the MyLars for Sherman Terrace, but similar to 316, we're working through those now. Just to let you know that the next board meeting right now is scheduled for February 23, 2021. And that's all I have this evening.
All right. Well, unless I hear any further business, which I do not, I would make a motion to adjourn at 8:04 PM.
Second.
Motion made by Claudia to adjourn at 8:04, second by Bob. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bogan?
Aye.
Jim Callahan?
Aye.
Bob Dougherty?
Aye.
Dave Edmonds?
Aye.
Carolyn Turner?
Aye.
Mike Ventresca?
Aye.
And Chair Kevin Donovan?
All right, seven favor, none opposed. Thank you.